He wants his second life, professional life. And he just wants, he's really into, um...
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have another one. He's really into doing some volunteer work. I think he wants to come back and volunteer in our math lab and things like that.
Yeah, just easier on his own schedule.
Yep. Osborne, yes.
Seven o'clock.
Jeff Osborne. Michael Vaughn.
We have a short...
He's Hartford. Yep, he's Hartford, which is literally five minutes from his house. So, in exchange, we got Dan Warner, who we're really excited about. Really, he's fantastic. He's really heavy too in the automotive, which is a need that we have in Tech Head.
It's gonna be quick, right? Right? Not reading every slide, right? We're not gonna read, we're just like, sorta... Real quick, because Mike's gotta take a really early flight tomorrow morning.
Which Mike?
This Mike just came back. He's gotta take a really early flight and...
Do you wanna go home now?
So, you know, I don't wanna...
Don't tempt you.
Before then, so...
I'm going with the client, too.
Was that mean you're not gonna be here tomorrow?
No, no, I'm here tomorrow.
But I just...
Sitting right next to me. I got a hearing, the zoning hearing.
Yeah, that's why. All right.
Trying to be, uh, focus on things. No, that's what's happening.
Yeah, that's no problem.
I hope she made me a car appointment, but I don't think she did.
I have...
Yeah, yeah.
I...
Universal Cars, is it? It's actually a big town. How many schools? Forty thousand students, right?
Yeah.
I got my change and my font change.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's bigger than Simsbury, so... I mean, that's just people coming in.
I think that's good, though. I think that's...
No, I've got, uh...
The Midwest is...
Then you mean a whole bunch of new ones.
And welcome to the Simsbury Board of Education regular meeting. Today is March 10th, 2015, and I will call to order the meeting. And we actually have a full house tonight for board members. This is great. And we'll start with public audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board may do so. And seeing no one at the first public audience, we will move on to our Board and Administrative Communications. Mallory, welcome.
Thank you. Right now at the high school, it's busy for pretty much everyone. A lot of the seniors are hearing from schools right about now and making final decisions for next year. Juniors are preparing to take the SATs, which will be held at the high school on Saturday, March 14. Also, this Thursday, the Trojan Leadership Academy will hold their fourth of five sessions from 2:20 to 3:20 in the amphitheater. And Trojan Leadership Academy is a set of gatherings run by Student Council and Mr. Street for aspiring leaders to discuss and improve on their leadership capabilities. And also, this Thursday at 7:00 PM, there's an event called Campus Connection, run by the Guidance Department, where college admissions counselors will be coming in and speaking to juniors about the application process and things like that. The winter sports teams are wrapping up their seasons, with many sports teams playing in states right now and doing very well. Two teams, the basketball and hockey boys, will be playing tomorrow night, both home, so...
All right.
For wins.
Great. We also, good. All righty. Susan.
Nothing, sir.
Tom.
Would only like to report that I've managed to do two school tours, one at Henry James and one today at Simsbury High School. And they have been just amazingly good experiences to get in touch with the facilities, of course, and not so much the studentship, but especially the faculty members and the principals. So, I'm very grateful that they've given me the time to do that.
Great, great. We've got five more to go.
Aaron Bill's next.
Great. Tom.
No, I'm all good. Thanks, Lydia.
Nothing for me.
All set? All set.
Mike?
I'm all good.
Tara? Erin? I just have a couple of things, really just one item, that there's an iPad conference held up at UConn in May. And we had three teams from Simsbury High School that submitted applications. We've had one that's been accepted to date. And we have two teachers, one team from Tooton Hills, which are two kindergarten teachers from Tooton Hills, along with Brian Marchinkowski, that will also do a presentation at the iPad conference in May. So, more to come on that, and hopefully everybody will get accepted and really demonstrating the kinds of things that we're doing in our classrooms with technology and with iPad. So, it's pretty exciting.
That sounds very innovative. Great. Looking forward to hearing more about it. Sue.
Just one thing to report. Over the weekend, we had the Northern Regional Music Festival. And just as a reminder, this is an audition process for middle school students, and they actually have grades five through eight audition. And we had a number of students, once again, be selected to perform in both the chorus, the orchestra, and the band across Simsbury. So, it's just such a pleasure to watch them perform and hear them perform. They did an outstanding job. And certainly thank the music teachers for their incredible instruction and support of these efforts.
Burke.
Two brief updates on capital projects. First, the ones that were approved last year, the Henry James Main Office and Squadron Line Main Office projects that you all reviewed plans on. We had our meetings with the state, the PCT meetings and prep meetings last week. We were pleased with how those went, and they, both projects have been referred to a local review process, which is what we were hoping for, which will hopefully result in a chance to go out to bid probably by around, around the end of this month.
Okay.
And so, those are positive steps. And then, in regard to the six-year CIP plan that you all voted on at your meeting on the 10th and was forwarded to the first selectmen for the overall town CIP process, had a chance to make a brief presentation on our projects over the weekend while the board was doing their budget workshops downstairs. And they, my understanding is that they concluded their budget process last night and did forward all of our projects.
Oh, good. That's, it's positive. Going out to bid and forwarding our projects is a very good sign.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
So, Burke, does the state, I don't wanna say acknowledgement of, they didn't, did they formally approve of the...
So, the way the process works is if, if they had sort of normal staff levels and so forth, then they would be able to do the approval themselves within a 30-day period.
Okay.
Because of their staffing levels, which have been extremely low, they essentially give us a letter saying, because they can't do that review within that 30-day period...
Gotcha.
...that they give us an option for local review, which is what we were actually hoping for with the guidance of the architects. So, now it goes to the local building inspector, fire marshal, and health district for review. Then it goes back to the state.
Right.
So, we'll go for one final meeting with them, where they, where they will actually, you know, still do the final sign-off. But they're relying on a checklist that is being essentially delegated to the local level.
Thank you very much.
Matt.
Just to share that tomorrow night, we present to the Board of Finance...
Yes, we do.
We do that downstairs in the town meeting room at 6 o'clock, I believe is the starting time.
Yes. So, all right. And all board members are welcome to attend that, that meeting. Very good.
That's it.
Oh, all right, good. And for me, just, I also had the opportunity to attend the Northeast Region with, with a student, and it was very impressive. It's always very impressive watching the students play from around the state, and the music was just superb. And I'm always, always amazed and impressed with the caliber of not only our students, but the musical students and the musical talent around the state. And also, last week, not as much fun as the music, the musical selections, but I had an opportunity to testify before the Appropriations Committee last Tuesday night at about 9:30, after being there since 5:00 o'clock. And this was the testimony for the, concerning the state budget, for the biennium. And of course, it was the governor's budget, but we testified, I and two other board chairs testified on the ECS funding to districts. So, there was also crack testifying, charter schools testifying, higher ed testifying, everyone within our realm of education. So, this is, they split us into two rooms. So, that's where we are now. Next week, I'll be testifying to Education Committee again on, on some other areas of ECS. As you know, this year's gonna be a really tough year, and of course, we're all, we're all saying the same thing or pleading the same, you know, cause and case about the, the funding of the ECS. So, you've been reading about it, and it's, it's, it's here, and we're hoping, hoping for some good news, but we shall see. And on not so much of a bright note, the budget should be finalized by June, but after last week, who knows? They may go on until August at this rate. So, that's where we are. So, a lot of time to tell you what's going on at the Capitol. All right, moving on to recommended actions. We have approval of minutes of the February 24th meeting, and Exhibit 1 in your packet. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yes. Stand.
Motion passes. We are now on to Exhibit 2, personnel.
I have one personnel action for your consideration this evening, and that is the resignation of Mr. Barry Jacobson. Mr. Jacobson spent his second career with us at Simsbury High School in the math department for the past six and a half years. So, at this point, I would recommend that the Board of Ed move to accept the resignation of Barry Jacobson effective June 30th of 2015.
There we go. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Sorry to see him go. My daughter has, I mean, he is amazing. He's done such, he does such innovative things. It's just excellent.
The good news is, he wants to continue volunteering in the math lab with his time. So, even after his second career is over, he still wants to give back to the Simsbury High School community, so...
That's great.
Just another quick question on that. When we lose, when we lose teachers like this one, and I think in a biggest being there was a loss as well, is there some sort of trend as to the reasons why we're losing teachers that we feel a bit about?
Tom, we always have conversations about teacher, with teachers about their reasoning for moving on from the Simsbury Public Schools. You know, I conduct exit interviews with those teachers to see if there's any themes. When, if there are, certainly I will share them with the board, but it's really personal circumstance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit 3 in your packet, donation to Simsbury High School from the Friends of Simsbury Hockey.
Okay. We have a gift from Friends of Simsbury Hockey in the amount of $6,000 for your consideration. This is at least the sixth year in a row that I have that we've received a gift, which probably averages out to about $7,000 per year. It helps to offset the cost of running the hockey program, and we would ask for your approval.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
It's really nice when you get these donations, 'cause they definitely help, 'cause it's a tough, and hockey's a very expensive sport. And we have these fabulous teams to speak to it, so we're very lucky.
Absolutely.
Obviously, all the kids appreciate it who are on the team.
We thank the friends and the parents and the fundraising and the businesses.
And I did forget to mention in communications that the girls just won second straight state championship.
All right, even more reason to celebrate. All right. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Simsbury Hockey. All right, we are now on to information and reports. Exhibit 4 in your packet, the McGowan presentation.
All right, I would like to invite Scott Baker, Principal of Terrific School, and Deb Driscoll, who is a language arts consultant at Latimer Lane, and they are going to present tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge a couple of other members that were on the steering committee for the McGowan Fund. And Jim Peters, in the back row, was a very helpful, engaging member of our committee, and we appreciate his time and commitment to that. And Tara, as your board representative, was on that committee as well. And Scott and Deb will certainly acknowledge all of the other members that aren't here tonight. But we are really, we've spent several meeting times together through the fall, right up till recently, not only as a full steering committee, but as a subgroup committee to do some tedious work that needed to be done. And so, we are here tonight to present to you how we envision the funds being used over time, and we're pretty excited about what we have to offer tonight. So, Scott will, and Deb will.
Great. So, yeah, thank you, Erin. This is, you know, this has been one of those wonderful feel-good committees to be part of, so I'm excited to present to you what we've done with our group thus far.
Not like the calendar committee.
It's a great committee, too. We're just, we're obviously mentioning what a great committee it is, what a great reason we have to be together.
So, you don't have a calendar committee.
Exciting work, and I think part of it had to do with the members that we had as part of our group. And you can see, I don't need to read through, we have a number of representatives of the committee here with us, but I think that the key idea about it was that we had stakeholders from really all realms of our district. We had parents, teachers, administrators from central office, Board of Ed members, and people from the community as well. And so, we, we got to hear so many different ideas on this committee about how we would like to construct the vision of it. And so, one of the things we began with was the mission. And to just summarize the mission, really, the bottom line is, is we want to honor the legacy of Kathleen McGowan. We want to promote educational enhancements and really encourage innovation across the district and new creative learning opportunities for our students. In order to do that, what we had done, and Burke can speak to this, you know, in more detail, but just for, for our purposes, taking the foundation amount, investing the amount, creating a district-wide activity fund, and then using the interest annually to fund the gifts that we're going to be giving out. So, in summary, that's what we're looking to do. So, this is a foundation that can really exist long into the future. And so, you know, that was one of our bottom lines, is to honor the legacy, to have a long-lasting impact, and to benefit students. And so, that brings us to the three really, the three pieces of the fund that we want to discuss. I have Deb Driscoll from Latimer Lane here, who is going to discuss the Teacher of the Year and the scholarship portion, and then I will explain how we're going to do the grants on the teachers will be able to apply. So, Deb.
So, as you know, we already have a Simsbury Teacher of the Year award in place, a program. And we, after, it really wasn't a lot of discussion, it was really unanimous, we decided that we wanted to rename the Teacher of the Year to the Kathleen McGowan, Simsbury Teacher of the Year. And there was, this was in partnership with the SCA, so everyone was excited and on board, and it was really exciting. And this way, we can, you know, keep her legacy going through the name of her, of, not her, but of the Teacher of the Year program. So, that's, we're very, very excited about that. Another thing is, the Board of Education, as you know, contributes $1,500 to the Teacher of the Year. Every year, they get an opportunity to attend a national conference. Well, of course, with the cost of living and airfare and hotels and conferences, it doesn't really cover, you know, flying to Texas or California or whatever. So, again, we came up with the idea of, and the Board of Ed, the SCA, rather, was 100% on board with it, is to, in addition, the Kathleen McGowan Fund will contribute up to $2,500 additional dollars to the Teacher of the Year for her, her, or him, to, you know, to attend a national conference. So, the Board of Education will still have that first $1,500, and then the Kathleen McGowan Fund will, up to $2,500, will contribute to that. So, that's very exciting. And then, as far as the scholarship goes, who's changing that?
Erin.
Oh. How do they know which one to change? As far as the scholarship goes, this is super, super exciting, because we're actually going to do it this year. And we're going to award up to five, hopefully five, $1,000 scholarships to graduating seniors at Simsbury High School who are going to pursue a career in education. We have a very exciting awards ceremony at the high school every year, where many, many grants are, and our scholarships, rather, are awarded, and this is just another way to keep Kathleen McGowan's legacy alive for years to come. The kind of, the caveat to this, which was very exciting, is that we are looking for a student, so a graduating senior, who went to one of each of the five elementary schools to represent Kathleen McGowan. You know, she was very grounded in the elementary school, she worked there her whole life, and, basically, her whole life. And so, we wanted to bring the elementary schools right up through the high school. So, we do, we will have a steering committee, which will be a subset of the committee that we had for the Kathleen McGowan Fund. And the high school will go through their protocol and give us some candidates to look at, and then we have a rubric, and we'll look at that, and we'll look at academic achievement, community service, dedication, lifelong learner, and we, again, will look for someone from each of the five elementary schools. So, five scholarships will be awarded this May or June, or whenever the awards ceremony is, so...
So, part of the work that the committee did as well is to create the scholarship form for consideration for the committee at the high school. We'll bring that forward to you at our next meeting, so that you can have a look at that for that scholarship. And it's, it's pretty exciting to think that these awards will take place this spring.
The Teacher of the Year, too, will...
Yes.
Also be this year when we need...
Right. The intent of the Teacher of the Year is to unveil it at convocation in August, and Georgia Robert, or Georgia Austin, who is the Teacher of the Year, the kindergarten Teacher of the Year, they typically have an opportunity to address the faculty, so that's where she'll talk about it publicly. So, she's pretty excited about that as well.
Right. And she was on this committee, too, so it was great to have her.
Yes, it's good to have her feedback. It's good.
Okay, the second part, so, you know, what I didn't talk about before is we'll have fixed costs, which we'll budget for each year, which will be the scholarships and the Teacher of the Year. The grants will be a variable cost. So, depending on what is available due to the investments coming in, and the earnings will dictate, you know, how much money is available there. And so, then what we would be doing is looking for teachers to submit grants, grant ideas or principles, or, you know, any, any member of the educational community that instructs students, projects that aren't normally funded by the typical Board of Ed budget. You know, all kinds of creative things. They may involve technology, they may involve outside groups, all, all different kinds of stuff. One of the ideas that was floated in our group were backpacks for reading over the summer for, for struggling readers, those types of innovative things that can help really move, move our practice. We also had been consulting with CEF, the Simsbury Educational Enhancement, in, in kind of working our two foundations in concert with each other together. So, we've been talking to them as well along the way, to look at what we would want to do for review process and a timeline, really asking for teachers to have their submissions in by April 30th. Our committee would convene by May 15th. We have yet to develop all of the guidelines for this, and I'll explain that in a minute. And then, at a spring Board of Ed meeting, probably once we, we get through the, the budget season, be able to come and do some real feel-good about the projects that have been approved and what's gonna be rolling for next year. We are going to wait until the spring of 2016 to start this process for a couple reasons. First, to allow the fund to gain interest, you know, so we don't eat into the principal too much. And second is, we really need to have a thoughtful advertising campaign, a way to get the word out to teachers, and have some time for them to really think about some innovative projects. If we launched it right now, there'd be a lot of last-minute rushing and, you know, those, those kinds of things. So, don't hit next.
I'm not.
So, one of our really fun pieces of the, of the work was coming up with a logo for the marketing campaign and all this stuff. So, I created this Google Forms, and we had about Martha Hogan, who is incredible with her computer graphics and has done a marvelous job with so much of our district literature, gave us like submissions, and we felt like we were like some CEOs making decisions about logos. And so, I made a Google Forms vote, and everyone voted. Well, we had a tie last week, so we put out like a final vote.
The last 24 hours.
The last 24 hours. So, this is the first unveiling of which one won, so you can hit next. So, this will be our official logo for the Kathleen McGowan Educational Enhancement Fund. I think it, it's, looks fantastic. It's the Simsbury blue and gold. It honors her legacy. So, you know, we have visions of like this backpack project that can be like monogrammed on the backpacks, and, you know, all those types of things. So, we're excited, we're excited about that. It was a tight race between the blue and gold star, and I think we called the other one the golden delicious apple, that had like a little apple and an O. But the blue and gold star won, so that's exciting. And then, just to communicate really quickly, what do we still have to do? We still have to come up with some guidelines on the funding for the grants, the review process in terms of how that will work, and what our, you know, what our process, process will be for that, expectations for the projects. And then, like, what are the post-grant expectations, communication, you know, getting them out into the press, those types of things, to, to be able to say, what, you know, if you're gonna take on this grant, what's gonna be expected, what's the reporting gonna be like? And then, just our, our quick next steps. The advertisement campaign, like I talked about before, creating a trifold, a little website, Martha Hogan's gonna help us with that. I'm anticipating that Georgia Austin and Matt will be at convocation, you know, talking this up as well, and having a communication out from the superintendent.
When you get good principals, they assign the superintendent.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm glad that you, that was you, I was gonna ask a question, I'm glad that you're involving CEF, because CEF has been a very, for almost 20 years...
Yeah. I think this is, we've seen some new grants being awarded from CEF through this process. I think our discussions with them has prompted some more activity on that front, too, which is great.
So, if you're gonna award the, the grant monies in the spring of 2016, will that give enough...
For use in...
It's in 2016. 16, 17.
16, 17, school year.
Yeah, school year.
Some of the reasons we talked about that lead, that lead time...
A year out, right, we're 15, of course.
Is if you're consulting with outside people, you know, their calendars are set way ahead, you know? So, we wanna be able to allow that to be able to happen, the scheduling.
Well, I like a piece of it, a large chunk of it moves forward with Teacher of the Year and with scholarships.
That's right.
A little more thoughtful on the dollars that will be varied, where I think you need a process that's better defined, so it's great.
And to give teachers a chance, if you said to them today, come up with an idea, let's do April 30th, they're the anarchists.
Stress.
It would just, we wouldn't have a good response. We want this to be big and wonderful like it can be, so...
We also...
That gives them a whole year to think about things and get things together and do some research.
As we've been talking about this, it's spurred some people's ideas that have touched this committee a little bit. And I've said, hey, why don't you go to CEF? And Terry Hinnault has just, just went to CEF and got a grant from them for our fifth graders, which is really exciting. We're gonna be doing some neat stuff there, so...
And that's what we want to be able to do, is to really market the fact that we have not only the McGowan Fund, but we have CEF, and we have our PTOs. And so, we have to educate our principals. When a teacher comes to a principal and says, I really would love to do something like this, they can help direct them, whether it's to their PTO, to CEF, or to the McGowan Fund. So, we need to work on that and get that up and running for next year. And we think that CEF has been such a great support for us, as our PTOs have, and we see this as a little larger kind of grant award that will maybe hit more kids over time, so...
So, Burke, a couple of questions on just like kind of the mechanics. So, like, this is separate, separate funds, separate accounting, that you and Matt are kind of ultimately responsible for dispersments and investment policy on?
Right. So, so, because, and that's a good segue into the, you know, part of the, part of the, the final codification of it is adding the Board Policy section that parallels the student activity accounts that currently exist, as well as the Department of Continuing Ed Funds. So, this is, this is separate. These funds were deposited at Simsbury Bank, and based on the investment consultant, we'll now be moving them over the next several months to a Schwab account with index funds, as was talked about, and that will start to earn interest and try to be self-sustaining. So, yes, you, you all appointed me as the treasurer of that for the state statute, and Matt and I will periodically review with the consultant how our performance is doing. Thank you.
Just three quick, quick comments.
Just three quick, quick comments, so one, I want to congratulate you all in the committee on what is really a superb presentation. Secondly, I got shivers up my spine as you were describing this, thinking that how incredibly happy this McGowan would have been if she were here to hear what you're doing with her generous bequest. And thirdly, this is such a, an amazing program, I would, I don't know if this is done or not, but man, this sounds like a press release to me, and I would love to see this in a press release, get out into the press very soon, not only to broadcast it within our community, the school community, but to let the broader community know what great work you folks have done here. Is that possible?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
We've been doing a lot of press from, from the beginning, when we first heard about, about this wonderful news, so this has been.
And as Scott mentioned, the members of the committee, they were very enthusiastic and want to continue, they all, you know, many of them have said, I want to be on the selection for the scholarships, I want to look at, you know, when the grants come in, I really want to be part of those as well, so I think it's, it was a great group and we'll engage others in it as well over time.
As to the scholarships, I'm just curious, how, the seniors have already applied through guidance for their local scholarships, so this is going to be a separate application that you have to notify the senior class about to do this year?
No.
They've already applied for this?
This is in Sims.
So, do you want me to talk?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So, the Simsbury High School already has through guidance, you know, a whole process for awarding scholarships, and what, they have all the information from our committee, so what they, the guidance department will do is when scholarships come across their desk, and they think, oh, these 20 people look like candidates for the McGowan scholarship, they'll forward those to us, when, then, and then we will have our own review committee, we have a rubric to, to read them and decide.
So there's no further application on?
Nope, they don't have to do any.
The universal.
It'll all be included in that.
We wanted to make it easy.
We got it in before the deadline.
That's what I was curious, because I'm like, you're talking to us now, but I know that that application.
We'd already gotten that.
Yeah, it's all set.
Nicely done.
Thank you very much.
Very good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us, we appreciate all the work that you have done through the school system, and, and remember Patty Lou, and we so appreciate everything that you're continuing to do for us, so again, thank you very much. All right, we are now on to Exhibit 5, Spring Assessment Update.
All right. I've invited Betsy Gonzalez, our Director of Elementary Curriculum and Director of Systemwide Testing, to present tonight on our Spring Assessment Update, and we'll give you an overview of what the spring will look like for our students in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11, and have an opportunity for questions or comments at the end.
Thank you, Erin. This spring we'll administer two state mandated assessments to some of our students. The first assessment that I want to talk about is the Science CMT and CAPT, that is a familiar assessment to you and to our teachers and to our, many of our families and our students. This assessment assesses the skills and concepts that are defined in the Connecticut State Science Frameworks. This test is given in March, later this week our students in grades 5 and 8 will take the Science CMT, in the following week our 10th graders will take the Science CAPT. It is a paper and pencil test, and the results are received back to districts in the summer, and then we share those results with families once we receive them. The second assessment is a Smarter Balance, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium Test, and that test is given to students in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11. The Smarter Balance tests math and English Language Arts, and this test replaces the CMT and CAP that was previously given in grades 3 through 8 and grade 10. The Smarter Balance is an online assessment, students will take this assessment on computers, and it is computer adaptive, and it's computer adaptive in nature so that it assesses skills and content and standards that are only within the student's grade level, it will not go above and it will not go below grade level. And the state anticipates that districts will receive the results from these assessments in the summer. We have some updates for the Smarter Balance, this is the first year that the test will be given, so it's operational this year, and we will be receiving results for individual or school and district performance, and we know that there will be four level of performance and how results will be reported out regarding student achievement. In the past, you may be used, you're used to five levels of reporting, of those performance levels, when we would get the results back from CMT and CAPT, but they're reduced to four this time. The high end is a level four, where students will exceed or could exceed the achievement level that's set by the assessment, and level one, where a student does not meet the achievement level. And as I mentioned, the test is computer adaptive, and it's only within those grade level standards and skills. There are two portions of the test, the English Language Arts, which encompasses reading and writing, and then there's a math test. Each test has two parts, the first is a computer adaptive test that students will take on the computer, and it will take approximately two sessions for them to complete. There will be a classroom activity that all students will take, and they will be given in the classroom by the classroom teacher before they take the performance task, and the purpose of that is to even the playing field, so all students have the same background knowledge and information as they approach the performance task. The performance task is something that's quite authentic, students will be asked for the ELA assessment to read two pieces of text, they will be asked some short answer questions that they'll have to respond to, and then they'll be asked to complete a full write. And that full write is an assessment of their writing skills, where they may be given a narrative and information or an opinion piece of writing that they'll be asked to compose related to that performance task. In math, it's the same structure, there's a computer adaptive test that will take approximately two test sessions, excuse me, test sessions, along with a classroom activity that evens the playing field to provide that background knowledge that students would need, and then a performance task, which is a real-world, authentic task that students will be asked to complete. Our students are going to be asked to respond differently to the questions on the S-PAC. There are some selected responses where students may have to answer multiple choice question with one correct answer. They may be asked to answer a multiple choice questions that have more than one correct answer. They would be asked, it wouldn't be uncommon for them to be asked to highlight information in a piece of text to show evidence or details that support their thinking, and it, they may be asked to do some graphing where they're actually doing that graphing right on the computer. In addition to that, they would be asked to generate a short response to a paragraph or to explain some mathematical thinking, and then there's that long write that I explained where students would compose a piece of writing related to a specific genre that will be randomly assigned. The S-PAC is designed to be accessible to all students, and there are several different types, or there are three different ways that the test is designed to give access to those students. So the universal tools are things like calculators that may pop up for specific questions that students would answer, there's a digital notepad where students can take notes about their thinking as they're reading something or thinking through a math problem, they can highlight information, they can spell check, and they can take breaks if they see some testing fatigue setting in and they just need to stretch or get some water and then come back to their testing. For students with IEPs or 504s, there are accommodations that are communicated to families during a student's PPT, so through the IEP, the team identifies the accommodations that they think would be most helpful to that student, those are discussed and those are allocated and built right into the test for the students. We have some flexibility regarding the testing window, so unlike the CMT and CAPT where it all had to be done within a month, we have about three months to spread this out. So this is an example of the elementary testing window that the principals and Erin and I developed this year, and our goal was to look at a schedule that was best for our students who were impacted by the testing, and really to allow things to be as normal as possible for the school and for the students involved. So you'll notice that we will start the S-PAC testing in the area of ELA with our grades 5 and 6 at the end of March. The following week, the 3rd and 4th grade students will take the ELA test, then we wait about three weeks before we come back and administer the math test to our students in grades 3 and 4, and then grades 5 and 6. This allows teachers to go back to teaching, and they can provide that daily instruction. It also allows our teachers at the elementary level to deliver the math curriculum and the content that students may be asked on the assessment, so students have more time for their learning. It allows more technology, technology to be available to all students, and it's a, it's a schedule that our teachers found to be quite favorable when we presented it to them. At the secondary level, we have block periods that are set up over the course of two weeks, and again, we created a schedule that really is conducive to learning for all students and really worked to minimize disruptions to the school schedule. We anticipate that the scores may be different than what we've experienced in the past. There are some scoring comparisons that were just sent to us by the state this week, and S-PAC has designed an assessment that really mirrors the types of questions that were developed by NAEP. And if you look at the graph in front of you, or if you look at the graph on the screen, you'll see that based on the field test, and you might remember that last year Simsbury was one of many, many districts in the state and throughout the country who participated in that field study, who had their students really work through this test, and we had a great opportunity for our students to practice the different types of questions and to practice that online testing. So if you look at the comparison here on this slide, you'll see that our, the Smarter Balance, and this is consortiumized, so this looks at data from all students in all districts who participate in that field study, shows that 41% of those students in grade 4 mastered with a score of a level 3 on that reading assessment. And that comparison to NAEP, and you'll see that Connecticut NAEP is the state national assessment, and we have students in grades 4 and 8 and 12 who participate in that, so it's the 4th grade data that they look at and throughout the state, and compare that to the 43% who mastered at that level on that particular test. You'll see that that's lower than as a state how we performed in grade 4 reading on the CMT. And so, we've been told that we can anticipate scores that would look more similar to our performance on NAEP than we would on CMT.
What's interesting about NAEP is we participate in NAEP, we never get specific data back about Simsbury performance in NAEP. So, that's what we don't know when we're looking at Smarter Balance data at this point, is we have no indication of Simsbury pilot data or like district data, it's just everybody that participated at this point, so.
And we did not receive any results back, we didn't think we would, and we did not receive any results back from our participation in the S-PAC field study from last year. NAEP is a national assessment of educational progress.
Randomly selected students, schools, districts that participate, and it's conducted across the national.
A national marker.
Have we?
Oh, yeah, squad, squad.
We have.
But not, I'm saying not our entire district.
No, students are randomly selected to participate.
It's typically about 80 students, when I was at the middle school, it was probably 80 students in 8th grade that would get chosen, and so.
Similarly to how they do the PISA data that we talked about, but the PISA data gave us back Simsbury specific information, which we were able to put it in context, which was nice, yes.
And the PISA stands for?
Performance of International Student Achievement.
Achievement.
Lot of acronyms.
We like our acronyms, but Lydia likes.
We don't like our acronym.
Lydia likes having definitions.
We don't like them at all.
No, but Lydia likes having definitions for acronyms.
Yeah, at least once in the conversation.
So, so have they raised the bar by doing this? I mean, so help me understand the 20-point difference in CMT versus?
So it's a different assessment. It, it assesses more problem solving, more critical thinking than the CMT and CAPT was designed to assess. So they're different standards, it's really apples and oranges.
Core standards.
Yeah. So are they going to bell curve it or something? I mean.
So, okay, so one more time, so is it a higher bar? You're saying, hey, it's a different bar, right? Sort of, hey, they're testing different things, but I, I look at this and I'm trying to draw a conclusion, right? This says that 43% versus 63%, and it's a higher bar, right?
I think the standards are higher, the standards are a higher bar.
Okay, thank you.
But again, this is Connecticut performance, not Simsbury, and, you know, our performance as we marked it against state, and DURK was always a little bit higher, but they are higher standards.
It's a different metric, right?
Yes.
Different metric that we all have to get used to, and this is not uncommon for, for, for the Connecticut and the nation, so we are all going to be.
So not many of our kids have seen testing like there was on this NAEP, it's just been few and far between.
That's right, correct. And our students did have the exposure last year, and that was quite significant, so they, they, they know what it's like, they had an opportunity to manipulate the technology, to read how the items are presented, because it looks a little bit different.
Well, I'm curious, not to be a needle in your side, but our current 11th graders, did they play with this last year? Because I know the 11th graders did.
Our current 11th graders did not, last year's 11th graders.
This will be fresh to them.
The 8th graders did.
Right, but I'm saying, these 11th graders are going to sit down for real this time, and they have not sat down.
That is correct.
Right, correct.
Yes.
Can I, I'm sorry, you're, I'll let you finish your question, I just have one quick question.
That's okay.
Oh, you were talking earlier about the, the computer adaptive aspect, so I got the impression when we talked about this last year, that it was going to be computer adaptive to the student, but it's not, it's adaptive to the, the grade.
So as students get questions correct, what we believe will happen is that the questions will become more difficult. But the questions will become more difficult, but the same standards identified for 3rd grade will be assessed, so they won't assess 4th grade standards. The content may become more challenging, the level of the question may become more rigorous.
Per student or?
It'll be, yes, you and I could be taking something different.
And on the contrary, if students are getting questions incorrect, it will adjust and hopefully provide some more accessible types of questions where the students can achieve success.
Last year's field test was not adaptive.
Correct.
So that, we didn't, it was not.
We haven't seen that in action yet.
I find that fascinating, I can't wait to see how it's going to play out.
The results will be interesting.
Yeah.
So, I also provided a slide that shows the grade 8 math, and the scores are in 32% for performance at a level 3 on the Smarter Balance field test from last year compared to the Connecticut NAEP, at that level of performance is 37%. We, yes, Tom?
That's, you mentioned some of the differences in where the bar is being set in the previous slide, what about in math? What are the significant differences in, in the criteria in the, in the math part?
What we're seeing in math, specific to the standards, is that there's more expectations for students to demonstrate problem solving and applying knowledge in multi-step types of problems, so it's not just computing answers, they're solving equations, they're reading word problems, it's just, it's where they, they really have to apply their mathematical knowledge.
And write about it as well.
And write about it.
How do you feel about that?
I feel that we have worked hard to align our curriculum and provide our students with opportunities to have practice with these standards, and it's something that I, over time, I think will, our students will become more fluent with those skills.
I think the question is a little bit different, I should have been more specific. How do you all feel about this change? Is it good or just different?
Well, I, I don't want to call that a loaded question, it's, it's, it's an interesting question in that we've been through a tremendous amount of curricular change, and our focus has been on curricular alignment to the new standards and providing professional development to support new methods of teaching. So, as we've been doing that, we've been now in a learning curve, in piecemeal in a sense in what this assessment will look like. So in your perfect world, you would build your instruction to what that end assessment outcome would be, that backwards design, we haven't had the luxury of doing that yet, so I think we feel very good about the steps we've taken from a curriculum and instruction standpoint, and we now have to just kind of see how that aligns with the assessment. As Tom, Tom referenced, you know, it's a big difference in, in performance when you look at the CMT, but we have other various data points that show how ready our students are for college and career, how successful they are when they get in college, how they perform internationally. So, I think we need to see what this assessment data tells us, from both an adjustment standpoint and from a validity standpoint the first time through.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to be very important for us as a district not to rush to judgment, try to better understand how this assessment information plays across different demographics, different subgroups, special education students, and learn how to, to work within this new system, because a lot of this is new, you know, people have talked a lot about the increase in assessment, it's not really an increase in assessment, I mean, it's the same grade levels we've tested, the time is more flexible, I think it's the way that we're going about doing it and the uncertainty about what the outcomes might be, we would hope that, we would have had some more specific information going through a pilot, you know?
Thank you.
And to Matt's point, unlike the CMT and CAPT where there were very specific objectives that you could predict would be on the assessment, and, not that you could teach to the test, but you had a really good sense of what you were working toward, you really can't teach to this test, so we really have to stay grounded to teaching the standards, and that's what we've been committed to do through our curriculum design and development and our support for our teachers.
Thank you.
Our district has been preparing for the implementation of the Smarter Balance over the last two years, it's not even a one-year plan, it's actually been a multi-year plan, but we are, we believe strongly that our participation in the field test has served us well, we are, we feel very poised with the technology infrastructure that we have, the machines that we have, and the devices that we need for our students. We've worked hard, very hard, to align our curriculum with those core standards so our students are prepared. so our students are prepared and have had exposure and hopefully mastery of the grade level content. Our coaches have been instrumental in supporting teachers in delivery of instruction and of curriculum in some of these new ways. We've worked hard to communicate to families. We had several family meetings last year and opportunities for parents to come and learn about the core standards as well as the Smarter Balance. We've sent out some written communication to families as well. And we've included all of this information on our website should folks want additional literature. And here's an example of the type of information that is on our website. There's a host of resources that families can look at. There's information about the core standards, about Smarter Balance. Connecticut has named the core standards, the Connecticut Core Standards. And there's lots of resources there for both teachers and for families. And Connecticut also has a new portal for the Smarter Balance. And that's the logo with a tree. And there's some good information if people would like more information. We also communicated this web, information about this website in a recent letter to our families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, so for the juniors this year, they're going to finish AP and go right into S-Back, right?
They will. They'll, they, the AP testing is the first two weeks in May. And the second two weeks are actually four-day weeks. We have a professional development day and we have Memorial Day. So the S-Back testing will take place in those two weeks. And as we designed it, the last day of school was June 9th at the time. So it was also preparation for end of course assessments and preparing for that aspect as well. We've shared that timeline very publicly with my colleagues around the state and with other folks that in the 11th grade, it is a very, very difficult time. In the middle of that, there's also an SAT timeframe on a Saturday that some of our 11th graders will be sitting for as well.
So that, that's a subject I can honestly tell you superintendents have taken a position on. I mean, that's overtesting. And we've really put significant pressure on our students and our faculty during that timeframe. It seems that everybody agrees with those sentiments, yet no action was taken this year to move that test out of 11th grade. I mean, we certainly feel strongly, and I know my local colleagues in the area feel strongly, that that assessment either needs to be removed, potentially replaced with the revised SAT, which is aligning to the core standards. It would make more sense, it's familiar with our community. Definitely more to come on that. But when you talk about areas where agreeable and thinking about, I really struggle personally with the fact that it sits right in the middle of 11th grade and that set of experiences for students that are pretty high pressure to begin with.
Is our choice to do it in May and not April so that we're not interrupting prep for AP? I mean.
Yes, because there's so much that, we have the April vacation, and there's so much that has to be done prior to that, those AP tests.
You can't bend that.
That we can't change that. And they didn't open the portal for S-Back, although it's opened earlier for our three-through-eight testing. They didn't open it until April 27th for high school. So that's one week before the AP testing. So that was really not an option. So we couldn't have done it any earlier than April 27th anyway.
Funny, and also on, back on that, when we talk about, and you probably read a lot about that in the media too, and this was a big discussion that we had before operations last week. And, you know, the legislators may not take any action on, you know, ECS. But when several of my colleagues and superintendents and others had spoken about the overtesting of 11th grade, they were listening. And you also had students testify about this too, because this is something that, and even the governor had also come out publicly and talked about this. So this is going to be.
Who makes the shift? The legislature, the State Department of Education? Who has the ball?
State Department of Education and Legislature. And now they're, now they're listed, last year at this time, this was not, not even up for discussion. And because even last year at this time, it was brought forward.
I mean, I think it has legs. I think it's something that will likely change.
This is something that this year has legs, and this is something that they are paying attention to.
It's not going to help the kids this year.
That's right.
Right, but I mean, Mallory can speak to this, because I know Ally had a total meltdown. Because while you're doing all of this junior prom, like there were some fun things you're supposed to be able to do as a junior in high school.
So, so this is something, again, we're continuing to, you know, this is what we testify also on, you know, to the legislators. And, you know, they're hearing from, you know, they're hearing not only from me, but they're hearing from other, you know, constituents and they're hearing from around the state and about this. So this is something that, it does have legs. This is something that they are, you know, going to be talking about at length. So we hopefully will see some, some kind of resolution with this at the end of this, you know, General Assembly, this year's budget, so.
And my last question for you is roughly, how long are the test sessions?
It's about six hours, three-through-eight, and it's about, the average is seven. This is in totality, and it's about seven hours.
How long is an individual session?
They're going to range from about 60 to 80 minutes.
Even for the early elementary?
So this is an untimed assessment. It's not like you have 60 minutes to take this test. And regardless whether or not you're done, you need to close your test booklet and your answers will be submitted. Students have as much time as they need to take this test. What we found last year is that those, the numbers that I just gave you are the numbers that S-Back gives you for these, for average numbers. It varies. We have students who move pretty quickly through the test, and we had students who really took their time and needed additional time. So the nice feature is that kids aren't, don't need to be stressed by time constraints. They really have as much time as they need to feel good about what they're submitting and to complete the test.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Good, thank you, Betsy, very much. All right, in order to follow on S-Back. All right, we are now on to Exhibit Six, Energy Efficiency Agreements. Is that as exciting as?
Well, it depends, it can be. When it segues into the budget. It's a convenient segue. We've done some much smaller scale versions of energy improvement projects through the Connecticut Energy Enhancement Fund. And over the years, those have been, typically it's Steve Twitchell, who's our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, who I really want to give credit for, always being on the lookout for these. And as a member of the Connecticut Buildings and Grounds Association Board, he, he was at a PD session and found out about the program. The state, I should say, the utility companies, now Eversource and CNJ, have approved vendors. So there's a, there's a, there's a process that they have to go through. And then essentially, they came out and viewed schools and did walkthroughs. And they came up with their own observations of what, of what would make sense. It isn't like we said, here's, here's, here's a defined scope of work. It's going out to a bit. And there was a real variation. So PowerPoint Energy was the approved vendor. They're out of East, out of Glastonbury. They had the most interesting proposal by far. So it's the high school, Henry James and Tooten Hill Schools. But the bulk of the dollars would be at the high school. And primarily, it's upgrades to exterior lighting, some interior lighting, variable frequency drives and energy, energy management for the high school. The payback is very quick as they calculated. And so to that end, I entered into these non-binding understandings to lock in to the incentive monies back in the fall. A little over $600,000 in, in those utility incentives that would be able to be put towards the project with the remaining 37% to come from the local level. And they offer something called on-bill financing at 0%. So you just would, you would, it would spread that out over four years to the utility bill that you're already getting. And yet it is a form of debt. So there's a, there's a more formal process that would have to be followed that we've been trying to work through. And side by side since the fall, when I first visited the Board of Finance about it, side by side with me was Tom Roy from the Department of Public Works. And the wastewater treatment plant had a similar project with a different vendor, but one of the approved vendors. So they have, they have gone through at least the first step of the process with the Board of Selectmen, which I would hope that we would be able to do for the next meeting later in March. And we're just trying to work out some of the final logistics of how these monies would be, the incentives would, would, would be tracked and would be reported from the audit and accounting point of view. So like I said, this is a much larger project with returns that even with the on-bill financing, my, my estimate would be that we could reduce the operating budget for utilities for next year by about $80,000, even with the on-bill financing. And my original conversation with the Board of Finance had been, if you upfront the money, then you take the full savings, which would be about $150,000, $160,000 in operating budget. So I am, I'm hopeful that we're nearing the end of this process. And it's been something I've talked multiple times with Joe Mancini, our finance director, and with Peter Askam has been very supportive as Board of Finance Chair. So I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to add that to some other things that we wanted to talk about, about ways to, to see operating budget savings for next year. But just wanted to make sure if you had any questions that I could answer them. So Burke, it's mostly exterior lighting and what else? What were the other items that you kind of went through? At the high school, it's mostly replacing all the, when you think about the high school, it's a lot of exterior lighting. Oh, yeah. And, and making that. Parking lot lights, all that stuff? All of that type of thing. There is some interior lighting, I believe in the auditorium. There's variable frequency drives added to the HVAC, as well as some better energy management of the controls. So those are opportunities that were identified by PowerPoint Energy and, you know, essentially verified with the, you know, with the utility company process to estimate savings. And that is, you know, where we're interested in pursuing. Hope that the work could be done in time for next, for next budget year.
All right, any further discussion? All right, thank you. It was as exciting as assessments. It was very exciting.
That's really good, right?
Absolutely.
So that's one encouraging factor we think will provide operating relief. And Burke has a couple other factors we'd just like to talk a little bit about tonight, because I think that'll be an important part of our conversation tomorrow night with the Board of Finance as well, just to get everybody on the same page. Burke, why don't you share?
Yeah, and just, I believe you have, you have the more detailed budget summary that was distributed to you this evening, based on your, on your vote of February 24th. But as, as was, as was stated, we have some other ideas and some particularly good news that came in from the actuaries after your last meeting was that our OPEB required contribution is looking down significantly over. We love actuaries. Over $103,000. Our actuarial heroes from Knowlman have given both the town and the Board of Ed very, very favorable news. So that, that has a good impact as a downward driver of over $103,000. So that's obviously something that we want to be able to update. We had some final workers comp and liability auto property insurance numbers that I believe the town has just received from Kerma. We think those are slightly, slightly better. So that, so we'll update the board at your next meeting on all of those items. But the largest item that we've been looking at really relates to the Internal Service Fund and the continued positive experience we've had with our self-insured health program along with the town. In the current year, we've had somewhat of a decrease in the number of employees taking coverage. But we've also had better-than-expected participation in the, the new high deductible health, health plan option. And looking, you know, looking at setting of rates for next year, along with Joe Mancini, the Board of Finance Director, and Bob Blumberg, our benefits consultant, we are looking at the ability this year to, to have considerable turnback under the assumption that we don't have to do a 12th payment into the Internal Service Fund. That was something that was done several years ago also. And the benefit of that is that if there was a return, which we're estimating at about $400,000, and in concert with the Board of Finance, which has been talking for a number of months at their meetings about creating the statutorily defined unexpendated education funds account or a non-lapsing fund, it would allow the opportunity for those funds to be held for educational purposes. And then we could essentially, you know, keep that as a part of our, our planning for next year. And the $250,000 for the special education out of district tuition and transportation, we could earmark from, from that fund, thus reducing the operating budget. We'd also like to take advantage of one of the goals that I've talked to you about regarding flexibility of restoring those two-year grants, those federal IDEA grants, where we really had to tap into those to a, to a much greater degree last year to come up with a positive balance last year at the end of 13, 14. So we see that by being able to restore those to about $150,000, as, as well as the $250,000 that I mentioned, we can make really good use of that scenario. And I believe that the Board of Finance will be making that a final decision on that. And if they were able to set that up, then between all those things we've talked about, we'd be at about a 2.8, excuse, excuse me, a 1.8% increase instead of a 2.47.
All right, all right.
And so we were, you know, excited to speak to you about that, that in cooperation with, you know, with, with the boards, the goal being to try to keep that mill rate down. But without having to get into that 1.7% cut list that we shared with you last time would be really the ideal.
So I think from a presentation standpoint, it's important tomorrow night that we present the 2.47. That's what the board approved, and we talk about the rationale. And I have a stack of slides that's condensed from what the larger board presentation was. But then we share these factors as well. I mean, many of the Board of Finance members have been involved in the conversation. So it's not a, not a surprise. Peter's been working with Burke on some of these policies and conversations. So, you know, to demonstrate that we have opportunity for relief and we have to work collaboratively to get there. I mean, they have to approve some policies and we, our board has to take a look and feel comfortable with that as well. But I think it's important we get all that information out on the table upfront tomorrow prior to the question and answer session that we have. But I know Burke and I have been encouraged by this, this information. I think it allows us some flexibility. And always what's most important to me is we present a budget that moves us forward and supports the quality programming that we have. And these reductions are out of efficiencies that I think benefit everybody. So are pretty noteworthy. So thank you, Burke, for the summary.
All right, further?
That's great.
Questions, all right. With that.
One question.
Yes.
On that. The, given that this is a public meeting and there was extensive discussion in our last meeting about cutbacks that were under consideration to get to 1.7, which were personnel-related primarily. The question is, what if tomorrow night, Board of Finance says, oh, this is really good that you found these nice savings and reserves and things. But what about those reductions that you thought you could make? Could you go below 1.8 by doing some of those reductions? I'm only asking whether or not it would be prudent to have a very, very persuasive statement to make on that subject. And in fact, maybe even, there may be some of those cuts that we do want to do. I don't know. So I, we, it's also true that at our last meeting, we did not discuss those cuts in any kind of detail, except for a couple of board members to say, it doesn't smell very good because it supports staff. And I'm just wondering, Madam Chairman, if you, if you think we should discuss those potential cutbacks at all before the meeting tomorrow?
You know, to me, Tom, I think the only appropriate answer is that it's, in as polite a way as we can say it to the Board of Finance, it's sort of none of their business. I think what. I think what we should do is say to them, if that question's posed that way, I think what we should say to them, if they would like to make a formal request to the Board of Ed to reconsider some of those items on that cut list, they can do that. They can send, they can say they're not happy with that budget, and they can send it back to us for reconsideration. And if they want to give us a number that they think is the number we should be trying to get to, that's within their purview, I guess. Thank you. But I think it's important that we draw a line between what's in the authority of the Board of Finance and what's the work of the Board of Ed. And I think that's the way to do it, is, again, simply say to them, you know, sort of, thank you for your input. If you have a number you want us to get to, tell us the number, and ask us to reconsider the budget. Then it comes back to us, because it, then we have to get into the details of how we might get there, and that's our job. And I, I think it's very important to draw a pretty bright line between the, the work of the Board of Finance and the work of the Board of Ed. And I, I for one can tell you that I think it's, it's, would be terrible to allow them to get into our budget and start telling us which line items we should be reducing and where we should be cutting. That's our job. And I think we have to be clear with them that that's the case. So, that would be my answer.
Very good. Well, well, well said, Mike. And I'll just reiterate, that's, that is the process and the protocol that we, we take before we enter into the meeting that Burke and Matt administration, you know, has, has spent the past two months basically on, you know, at, at, at our direction in moving forward with that meeting. So, where we come out of that meeting tomorrow night, will be further discussion after that.
We also kind of, when, when they do these cuts, this, this is a very common thing that happens every year. We have a discussion, they bring together ideas of cuts if we need to bring, come back to them. Discussing them further when there are people and positions can get very personal and can really change the morale of, of the school and districts. So, until we really have to needle and, and, you know, get right down into the haystack, we, it's kind of better to wait until we need to.
Well, I had, I had made the statement to, to Matt in, in conversation that one could take, this board could take the position. It doesn't want, but it could take the position, that if the Board of Finance says, we, we're glad you've gotten down to the 1.8 number, and we're feeling really good about that, but we want you to go further. And what I said to Matt was, I, I, I'm just wondering, at what point does this board say to that board, you know what? We can't go any further without compromising the quality of the current educational situation in the Simsbury School District, and we're not gonna make any further changes unless you, Board of Finance, are gonna mandate that we do. We want you to understand what you're doing. And I don't know if that's the kind of language you use in, 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 in public meetings with, with the Board of Finance, but it seems to me that that's really what the issue is. I know for sure that there are people on the Board of Finance that think we should be cutting things back. And I, and I'm just wondering if we've come to the point where we just have to draw a line and say, no, we're not doing it.
I think, I think part of that conversation, and we went through it last year, and I think we got, we came to a reasonable conclusion in working with them, was they asked for multiple reduction scenarios last year, taking it all the way to a negative .5, I believe, was the initial request.
Yeah.
I presented my budget. We had, much like we did this year, some favorable experience. I asked to come back before the Board of Finance and represent our board and talk more specifically about exactly what you said, Tom, you know, that we feel we are in a place pretty much as low as we can go. What are our actual goals here? You know, what, what is the metric you're trying to get to, and what, and what is that end? And it ended up being a conversation, a productive one, about a flat tax rate and flat mill rate. We had a number we were able to get to, and in getting there, I said, if we can get to that number, there is no need to have a different conversation about reductions of force and other scenarios, because those scenarios aren't meeting a goal, so to speak. And I thought they were pretty reasonable and respectful of that. We haven't gotten that specific guidance. So, I think to let the process play and have the conversation and see where we, see where we go with it is important. And I think if we get to a point, I can certainly tell you, as superintendent, I will, won't hesitate to articulate that I feel we're to a point that's hurting program and services. We can certainly have that conversation at that point.
I think it's a fair answer of that question that's posed tomorrow night, is to remind the Board of Finance that we have spent a lot of time and effort getting to this number, and, and had a lot of debates around what our cost structure should be and what we think are appropriate spending levels, and this is the result of all that. So, we've kind of gone through the, the process. Having said that, it's entirely within their right to, but I would ask them to formally vote on it, that the board, it's entirely within their right for the Board of Finance to formally vote on a resolution to send the budget back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration.
Board of Ed.
And, Board of Ed, pardon me, for reconsideration. And, and if it comes back that way, we can vote to reconsider if we want to, but I think that's the protocol. We would have to say, are we, and we shouldn't do it sort of on the spot tomorrow night. We can't, frankly, because it's not a Board of Ed meeting tomorrow night. So, they would have to give us a resolution, sending us the bud, the budget back to us, asking us to reconsider, and we would have to vote and agree to reconsider, and then do that. And if we chose to do that, come up with a new number. It may be that we vote not to reconsider and leave the budget intact and send it back to them. So, you know, that's an impasse, I guess, and I don't think, I, I don't think we've ever reached that impasse yet. Thank you.
Burke, yes.
The other, the other comment I wanted to make about process, Tom, just in, in all the budgets that I've observed for maybe about eight, eight years or so of budgets, that we're still not to the end of the process, that we have the public hearing scheduled that the Board of Finance has for, for both the town and Board of Ed budgets, including capital, for April 8th, and that I've seen them show a good deal of respect for that process. So, they might say personally they think the budget should be a, a lower target, but they do want to hear from the public, and then they have the option after that hearing to then come back and say, you know what? We are or we aren't, you know, comfortable, you know, making, you know, pushing it down further. So, we're still, you know, relatively early in this process. We're getting to the, to the middle, but there's still, there's still time. So, I don't think you have to feel that urgency, that this is a, a confrontation just, just because they've, you know, given us a goal, but not a guideline.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. And discussion to follow. All right. With that, we have our second public audience, and one of the audience wishing to address. Thank you for those who did address last previously, and thank you for those that are still here with us. It is now, we're going into executive session to discuss a personal matter. So, with that, I would like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
No.
Go into executive session.
Executive session. Motion to second session, second?
Second.
On favor?
All right.
Motion passes. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 24th, here at 7:00 PM. And again, tomorrow night, Board of Education will present our budget to Board of Finance at 6:00 PM downstairs in the Board of Selectmen boardroom.